Township Civil Service?
Yes.
It's just something about shared services.
We all right, right?
Yeah.
You got seven o'clock?
Yeah.
Thanks, right. Township meeting Monday, November eighteenth, two thousand and nineteen is now called to order. Councilman Van Cherry, please lead us in the flag salute.
Pledge of诫 to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Kraus, please read the statement of public notice.
They've noticed that adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with NJSA ten four four dash eight and NJSA ten four four dash ten and as follows. Notice of the meeting was promptly posted on Wilmore Boulevard Municipal Building located at two twenty-five Main Street, Little Falls, Jersey, on January second, two thousand and nineteen. A copy of the notice was mailed to the North Jersey Herald, using the record on the same date. Additionally, a copy of the notice is filed in the Office of Township Clerk on Saturday.
Mrs. Kraus, at this time, please call the roll.
Councilmember Cordenear?
Present.
Councilmember Quadi?
Present.
Councilmember Receiver?
Present.
Councilmember Van Cherry?
Present.
Council President Scobha?
Present. Have a motion to approve the minutes for the meeting of October twenty-first and November fourth.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Mrs. Kraus, please call the roll.
Councilmember Cordenear?
Yes.
Councilmember Quadi?
Yes.
Councilmember Receiver?
Yes.
Councilmember Van Cherry?
Yes.
Yes. Councilmember Cordenear?
Yes. This past week, we had another in our series luncheon learn with our senior advisory board. And each, each month that we do another luncheon learn, we get more and more seniors coming. And it's very, very gratifying. This month was about the history of tea, and we had a luncheon and a little tea party. And it was a discussion from our own Mrs. Anna Quadi. She did a fabulous job with all kinds of illustrations and research, and we had all different kinds of teas. And I have to say, the seniors were very engaged with a lot of questions, and it was great to see their interaction. And what makes it gratifying is they all keep asking, well, what's the next one we're going to do? So these luncheon learns have become a really, a really big success. So next up for the seniors is December eleventh with our holiday luncheon that is actually sponsored and presented by the REC Center. And that is a favorite of the seniors. And we get anywhere from eighty to one hundred seniors coming for that holiday luncheon. So we're definitely looking forward to that.
Thank you, Councilmember Cordenear. Councilmember Van Cherry?
Thanks, Council President. I had a chance to discuss with the mayor and council something that I brought up at a past meeting regarding the speed possibility in service streets in town. And based on those discussions, we're going to move ahead with looking at a pilot program targeting two streets at this point for twenty twenty, Jacobus and Van Helt. As a next step, I've been working closely with our township engineer, just to get all the information that's needed, we're looking to set up a town hall with residents from Van Helt as well as Jacobus, just to have members from the police department, of course the mayor, myself, probably Council President Scobha, members of the transportation committee, our engineers as well, probably PPW, just to come in and just answer any questions or concerns residents have regarding the possibility of adding speed pumps as part of this pilot program next year. We'll work on scheduling that, and obviously there'll be notification that a letter will go out to each of the residents encouraging them to attend because the goal is, based on the work done by the engineer, we've mapped out possible locations for these speed pumps. So we want to have conversations, make sure that there's a willingness on some of the residents' part to do so. If they do say no, it has to be adjusted and kind of goes from there. The other thing that I'm working on with the transportation committee as well as the police department is, you know, looking at other streets that where we could add the possibility of four-way stops, um, break up some of the roads that have long stretches that have created a ton of traffic around town. So that's something that we're going to work on, identify a number of different roads around town where we can make some adjustments in twenty twenty as well. The other update I had is I did speak with the lieutenant from the sheriff's department earlier today, hoping to get the report based on the eight streets that we did traffic studies on a few months, over the past couple of months. So I'm hoping to get that so I can share it out to everyone to let us know what some of these results were. But I mean, I'm encouraged to fact that, you know, we're taking some action to do some things when it comes to speeding around town. I mean, it's probably not going to be the answer for every street, but at least if we've identified some opportunities to test the waters and see what we could build on from there. That's it.
Councilmember Quadi?
Thank you, Council President. Regarding the domestic violence committee, I just want to ask, send out to the public that if anybody is interested in getting involved, please reach out to me in front of my email on our town website. We are planning a lot for next year. If you'd like to participate in probably more liquor raid, the street fair, the fall festival as we did this year, and we're looking to provide some materials to the police department that they've requested regarding information for victims of domestic violence. And so, you know, these issues take work and they take volunteers to do it. And so if anybody's interested in being an active member of the community, please reach out to me about the devil. Also, we are having our holiday tree lighting on December sixth at Willmore Road Park at six thirty PM. I just want to mention that I am not playing this, so the likelihood of rain has probably gone down, considering the last two events that I played were breaking out. But I know that there is a lot planned for that night, and it's looking to be an even bigger event than the one that we've had in the past. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Quadi. Councilmember Receiver?
Thank you. So on the library at the front, I'd like to say that we will be having a dine and donate on December second at Shake Shop over by the Willowbrook Mall. And that will be all day from all business hours. And anytime you go and dine at Shake Shop that day, twenty-five percent of your purchases will be donated over to the Little Falls Public Library. So we do encourage you to please go and enjoy some burgers and fries. In addition to the library, I'd like to thank very much Fire Chief Sweetsie for helping us organize a CPR and AED training happening on December tenth. We will be closing the library to have this training happen for all Little Falls Public Library employees. The library will be closed from eleven to three so that we can conduct this training. As I mentioned in previous reports, we do have a new AED installed at that site, so we want to make sure that our employees are well-trained and able to utilize that. So thank you very much for that. And then yes, thank you, Councilman Quadi. In terms of the holiday tree lighting, we will have, we will have appearances by Santa Claus and Mrs. Claus and possibly an elf or two. And we will be having performances by some local community groups here. So it's going to be a great event. It is at Willmore Park on December sixth at six thirty PM. So please, you know, enjoy the night, come out and bring your families. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Receiver. I just have one quick item. In the past, the, those who attended on January first, we normally would have a swing in and a reorg. However, this coming twenty twenty, well, the governing body will not be meeting on January first. So in case the staff wants to make plans or council members want to take an extended holiday, we will be meeting at a later time to convene for the, for the reorg in January. Mayor Dammanna?
Thank you, Council President. I have two brief updates. One is in regards to the Little Falls Athletic Club. I have been contacted by a number of members of the Little Falls Athletic Club Board as well as a number of individuals in the public who have had discussions with me about the possibility of the Little Falls Recreation Department taking over and consistently running the recreational sports that we have here in town. As most people know, the LFAC is a completely volunteer-based organization. And as most people know, time is precious to a lot of people. The amount of time that the members of our LFAC have put into scheduling games and doing some, a lot of the administrative work is something that they are, I guess, losing some interest in and hoping that the municipality can assist. And I think it's part of the municipality's job to provide services, and not only to adults in our community, but especially to children in our community. This is something that, again, there's a lot of things that still need to be worked out, but it's not something that should come with a price tag. This is something that, that will be generated, revenue is generated through the program that should offset any expenses that the township may have. This is again about providing services to our children. I, again, a lot more work needs to be put into this. I ended the next Little Falls Athletic Club meeting and just get general consensus from everybody that that is what they all want. This is not something that myself as mayor, as council, intends to do in any sort of hostile nature where we come in and say we're taking over sports, it's something we want to run that. It's just the opposite, literally the exact opposite of that. We are looking to come in and work with them so that we can facilitate on our end the use of the fields, the games, the scheduling, confirming with the umpires and the referees that they're seeing those days. And that's something that our staff, I think, is well-equipped to handle and something that, again, would actually offset a lot of the stresses that a lot of our volunteers have, and let them focus more on coaching, helping our kids in the faculty, rather than sort of being so worried about calling and confirming for employees and umpires and the like. So again, there's still some more discussion to have this, but it is something that is certainly on our radar and something that is being discussed. The next report that I have is about Main Street, and I have some good news. We, I know I reported recently in an email last night on our website that Main Street was going to be temporarily resurfaced. It's not going to be repaved from curb to curb right now. That's something they're going to do in the spring because the ninety days that while they're going to settle has not expired. But what we're going to do in the meantime is the water company has hired a contractor to come in with a four-foot milling machine and mill the ladder, the tire, right through the main line, as well as all of the laterals, the service connections to each and every single home or business up and down Main Street. That is something that we are hoping to have done next Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday evening. Possibility if they don't complete it then, or whether they may go into the following week for one or two nights, but hopeful that they will have it completed on Monday, I'm sorry, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. We're hopeful that they will have it completed on Monday, I'm sorry, Wednesday, Thursday and Friday evening of next week. They're going to be working at night, it's going to be, I'm sorry. Wednesday, Thursday and Friday of this week, and they're not going to be working on Thanksgiving. The possibility of it continues into Monday of next week. Sorry, I misheard. They will be, again, doing a four-foot wide mill and then repaving. There was some information that they were notified of today. And in the spring, before they do come back to pave curb to curb, there's going to be some additional work that they need to do, but should be wrapped up in a period of a week or two. And that additional work is, the county underneath the asphalt, actually has a good thick layer of concrete. And the county is requiring the contractor, before they mill and pave the entire roadway, come back, dig out the trench that is already, what we see as a trench, just a small portion of it, pour concrete into that trench before they come back and mill and give it a final paving curb to curb. So they do believe if they don't, they need about under two, up to three weeks to retake the trench, throttle the concrete, allow it to cure, and then finally come back and retake it from curb to curb. So there is still a little bit more work, but the good news is, we're hoping that by the end of, by Thanksgiving, we will have at least a fairly freshly paved Main Street and that trenches will be much smoother than they are now without some of the too much work that you're hitting as you're drying your muddy down. Again, more than that gets through the winter and then we'll be back in the spring to really do the job. So we are thankful for the water company working with us. It was not an easy feat or something that they were thrilled to do to incur the expense of building and paving the entire roadway that was torn up right now and doing it again. But they have vigorously agreed to do this and they will be taking care of that for us this week.
Does the council have any questions or comments concerning Mayor Danana's report? Counselor Wenzel. Have a motion to open to the meeting for the public for agenda items only.
So moved.
All those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye. All those opposed signify by saying nay. Mrs. Kraus.
Anyone wishing to address the township council, may use the council president. Please give your name and address to the record, comments or to be limited to three minutes. However appropriate, you may be granted additional time, in the sole discretion of the council president.
The floor is open.
Louis Fernandez, 54, Ivesworth Street.
Good evening.
How are you? Ordinance thirteen, I want to talk about ordinance thirteen seventy-one, which is the salaries. I almost forgot it. Now that I'm opposing anything, but it was just weird, the range. And I was wondering if there's any logical explanation as to why the salaries range, like in, in some cases, you know, seventy thousand dollars one way or the other. From the starting to, I guess, from, one is the starting, the other one is the ending salary? Is that what it is?
Do you have a specific, which salary you're talking about, Mr. Fernandez?
Well, if you just look at the first two.
When you're saying, okay.
The, the, the range is, is quite substantial. And then if you go, there's these other ones down the line, but I just happened to look at the first two and I was wondering why, is that over time, is, is what?
Okay. Mayor, would you like to answer why there's such a widespread between forty-five thousand and one hundred and nine thousand?
Sure. The way that works in this form of government is the council sets a salary range for municipal employees. The range can be, as you see, varies for depending on the job description, the type of work that each employee positions, whether full-time, permanent, part-time, and hourly employees receive. At that point, in this form of government, I don't have discretion to provide people with a, to assign a salary within that range that the council has set. So, for example, and I will use him because he is one of our newest employees in town since this demonstration, the, I'm here. So, for example, municipal judge, there's a range from thirty-four thousand and change and it goes up.
Fifty-six.
Fifty-six. Because if the judge that is now sitting has moved to bench, or he's not someone that came in with years of experience on the bench, he started to lower, lower the salary. Same for the prosecutor, however, over time, again, it allows for raises to be assigned to individuals. And their salary can be, again, anywhere within the range that is assigned to each employee.
And that is why, the starting salary?
Well, the starting salary could theoretically start at the highest end of the range. But because I have discretion in, in between the range set by the council, and because it was a judge that was newer to bench.
Right, right.
It started at high and the salary started at low.
Yeah, I was just wondering.
It's just, it's just a range that then gives discretion to, to each employee and as their.
Like you said, I was just wondering because sometimes it can double as much, it can be as, almost twice as, as much.
Can allow us to, to increase experience.
Thank you, Mr. Fernandez. Hi, Ray.
Raymond Kestrowski, 170 Denado Drive. Two things. One thing, at the past election, at the primary, we had a problem over at St. Agnes with the, with the polling places. We have two polling districts there and they have a daycare and they were locking the one door for access. Which really wasn't a problem for the primary, but I think for this presidential, it's going to be a problem only having one access. And I also think it's a, as far as I know, it's a fire code, you have to have two ways to get in and out of an area. But now the woman that runs the daycare, you know, as a basic rule, whenever I've been working on an election, she's always locking the door, which I understand for safety for the kids. But, you know, we basically rented a hall for the election and only have the one access to it.
And you are a poll worker, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Right. So that, so if that polling place was to get crowded and some people were, I think, trying to get through that door.
Yeah.
And we're being told that they, not in a good way either, to, that they couldn't go through that door. And I understand that predicament, but we're, we're going to work on that because that's, that's unacceptable.
Well, because even on the inside, you have over that doorway, there is an emergency exit sign. So it is an emergency exit.
Right. Well, thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Council President.
Yes.
I can bring that up to the board of elections so that we can talk to the board on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
The other thing is, I know it's been brought up before, I don't know if there's anything more on it. The intersection of Little Falls Road, Willmore Road and Francisco. I know there's been some discussion, I don't know if we, you know, stoplight or stop signs or, you know, I don't know what's going on with that yet.
Councilman Vanchery, Councilmember Vanchery.
My goal in 2020, traffic budget. This is my goal, it's something that we all agree needs to happen at that intersection. It's a matter of working with the budget for next year and working with the county.
Yeah, I know, that's always fun working with the county.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing that forward. Anyone else? The floor is open. Seeing no one else come forward, have a motion to close to the public?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Have a second?
Second.
Can we ask questions before roll call? Or do we have to do roll call then ask questions? Ask questions, right. Does the council members have any questions concerning consent agenda? Councilman Quattie.
I had, I had a question, I spoke to our business administrator about it and he seemed to answer just.
Would you like to tell us what that was about?
It was related to the budget transfers. Just the information that we initially received had budget codes on it, but not, not, you know, verbal dis, not text descriptions of what those budget codes were. So the business administrator was kind enough to detail to me what, what accounts were, we had some extra money in which accounts they were moving into specifically as opposed to just the budget codes. So I appreciate his, his education in that. And we discussed going forward that we would try to print it out with word, you know, descriptions in text of what those different budgets were.
Not so much in like a CPA form, okay. Any other council members have questions or comments regarding consent agenda? If none, Mrs. Kraus, call the roll.
Councilmember Cordenear, yes. Councilmember Quattie?
Yes.
Councilmember Seaver? Yes. Councilmember Vanchery?
Yes.
Council President Scobah?
Yes. Mrs. Kraus, please read ordinance one three seven one.
Second reading of public hearing of ordinance number one three seven one, an ordinance entitled 2019 Little Falls Salary Ordinance.
Have a motion to open to public hearing on ordinance one three seven one.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Have a motion to close to public hearing on ordinance one three seven one.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Have a motion to adopt ordinance one three seven one.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Kraus, call the roll on one three seven one.
Councilmember Cordenear?
Yes.
Councilmember Quattie?
Yes.
Councilmember Seaver? Yes. Councilmember Vanchery?
Yes.
Council President Scobah?
Yes. Mrs. Kraus, please read ordinance one three seven two.
Second reading of public hearing of ordinance number one three seven two, an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amended the township, the township of Little Falls that are giving in its entirety in chapter one sixty-four entitled, property pending foreclosure registration and maintenance and replacing chapter one sixty-four with registration of foreclosure mortgages and vacant property.
Have a motion to open to public hearing on ordinance one three seven two.
So moved.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Have a motion to close to public hearing on ordinance one three seven two.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Have a motion to adopt ordinance one three seven two.
So moved.
Second. Mrs. Kraus, call the roll.
Councilmember Cordenear?
Yes.
Councilmember Quattie?
Yes.
Councilmember Seaver? Yes. Councilmember Vanchery?
Yes.
Council President Scobah?
Yes. Mrs. Kraus, please read ordinance one three seven three.
Second reading of public hearing of ordinance number one three seven three, an ordinance entitled, ordinance of the town, council attached Little Falls in the county of the safe state of New Jersey, amended chapter one twenty-six, littering.
Have a motion to open to the public hearing on ordinance one three seven three.
So moved.
Have a second. All those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye. All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Have a motion to close the, to the public hearing on ordinance one three seven three.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Have a motion to adopt ordinance one three seven three.
So moved.
Have a, Mrs. Kraus, call the roll on one three seven three.
Councilmember Cordenear?
Yes.
Councilmember Quattie?
Yes.
Councilmember Seaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Vanchery?
Yes.
Council President Scobah?
Yes. Mrs. Kraus, did we get a second on that? Was it Councilman Vanchery? The record's good? Okay. Okay, Mrs. Kraus. Ordinance one three seven six.
Introduction of ordinance number one three seven six, an ordinance entitled, amendment, ordinance of the township Little Falls in the county of the safe state of New Jersey, entitled, chapter three, administration of government in the code of the township Little Falls, the second reading of public hearing scheduled for December sixteen, twenty nineteen.
Have a motion to introduce ordinance one three seven six.
So moved.
Have a second. Mrs. Kraus, call the roll.
Councilmember Cordenear?
Yes.
Councilmember Quattie?
Yes.
Councilmember Seaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Vanchery?
Yes.
Council President Scobah?
Yes. Have a motion to open to public comment for general matters only.
So moved.
Have a second. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Mrs. Kraus.
Anyone wishing to address the township council, may use the council president. Please leave your name and address to the record. Comments or to be limited to three minutes, however appropriate, you may be granted additional time, in the sole discretion of the council president.
The floor is open.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Andrew Baggett, seventy-eight Franklin Road, Denville. My Little Falls interest is one oh five and one oh seven Main Street between Center and Stevens. Did we ever get a answer on moving this podium forward as it is in the planning board meetings?
Yes. Mr. Baggett, we talked about it and right now the council just feels it's a better safety position, place to have that podium at this time.
Just a quick question for the mayor on the paving project. Can you, is there cross streets that that's involved? Is that all the way up and down Main Street?
It's going to be from Patterson Ave, where the water main started, all the way up to the, between Brown and Mollage. So it's going to be the entire length of the water main project, including all the service connections between.
Thank you. Just a couple of questions on ordinance thirteen seventy-four, the signage. I want to commend you if you worked on it for two and a half years.
Thank you.
Just a couple of questions. One of the biggest things I think would be that we need to highlight the changes that are going to be affected. Any organization that makes changes, it's highlighted, it's easy to see how you'll be affected directly, you know, how it's going to change if.
I'm not sure. What do you mean by highlighted? I'm sorry.
Just what the sizes of the ordinances are, of the awnings, let's say. Awnings, basically, I have awnings on my building and it's hard to read them all over. I have to go out there with a tape measure and find out. Some of my upper awnings, I believe they stick out past. In nineteen ninety-two, I was awarded those awnings through a Main Street USA as aesthetic values. And I'm concerned that, you know, now there's a new ordinance going on and they might extend out a little further. Also, the other, or I'm not sure what you call a rounded awning. And some of the ones that I have are bigger than three feet, I believe. I didn't, didn't go out there with a tape measure yet. And then I noticed that you have a one-foot valance on your thing.
I'm not sure.
Would this compensate for four feet on the other type of awning? Just a couple of other questions that concern me. Basically, the biggest thing is to highlight the changes so that people can see how they're going to be affected.
We will go back and look at that, what those, what your questions are, and we'll get back to you with all those answers. But however, I'm, we'll take a look at it. We'll take a look and see if we can highlight those issues.
Do you think we need to contact any of the building owners, the business owners?
They will be, they will be. Everybody will be contacted.
When is it due for the second reading? Is that, is it?
It's already, it's done. It's done.
It's finished?
Yes.
It's, it's signed over? That's it?
Yes.
I guess I missed it?
Do you just?
I have a little, I'm a little, a little concerned that the lettering size, four inches, is a little small, too. I thought that that was.
I have capacity when you're, I wear.
On page two, page, page eleven, section two, so that was the, in line eight, the letter, line H, four-inch lettering on there. I feel that that's like pretty small for somebody. Maximum lettering sizes.
This is what we came up with, sir.
The changes highlighted would be the, a big plus.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming out. You don't have to state your address, Mr. Fernandez.
About the name?
Yes.
Louis Fernandez.
Thank you.
Still at the same location, though.
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry. Sometimes we like to laugh a little bit, you know? It's very driver stuff we do here at times.
I bet it is.
Go ahead.
I have a question for the mayor. You already beat me to it because I did receive the email regarding the paving that is going to be done by New Jersey Water, I believe. Coming, well, one of the things that you write in that email, once the spring arrives, the entire roadway, roadway will be repaved from curb to curb, from curb to curb. Are they paying for it? Or is the township paying for it?
No, that was a deal that us, what the county made with the utility, that upon total completion, the entire roadway needs to be recreated as on their own as part of their infrastructure upgrades.
Okay. Because you, you didn't mention that a few minutes ago. Also, I don't know if you read an email, but I did receive an email from, from a gentleman that come, or used to come to all these meetings before. And he has something to do with the development of. with the, the development of the site where Hoffman La Roche used to, used to be.
In Clifton, sir?
Well, Clifton and Nutley. There's 116 acres that they're going to be redeveloped by Pris Capital Partners or whatever. And they go into details as much as what they are going to be done, how many housing, theaters, and so forth and so forth. They also say that, but what they failed to say is, is whether the, this was a pilot project, whether this is going to be, you were going like this, you know that for a fact.
Mr. Wenzel? Go ahead.
Mr. Fernandez, you're asking if the Hoffman La Roche redevelopment project, 103, is a pilot program?
Yeah.
It is, both Nutley and Clifton, because as you correctly pointed out.
Right. It's going to be. Actually, it's more in Clifton, according to the article, you, you, the, the number of acres.
There's a portion that's being redeveloped.
Right.
And both, both communities.
Right.
Both Clifton and Nutley.
That's.
Have approved pilot programs.
Pilot program. Okay. And, and the reason I ask is, I'm asking this is because it says that once the, the develop, once the area is developed, it's going to bring $15 million tax revenue yearly. That's a lot of money. That's basically the entire, just about the budget of Little Falls, which makes me wonder, maybe we, maybe the township undersold the project down in, off Main Row, off Main, Main Avenue.
So, does the council have any questions or comments regarding, Councilman Vancherri?
So you know, I worked there for 2014, so that Roche. And the 15 million is basically making up what Roche was paying, because it was about nine million going to Nutley in tax revenue, and a little over six was going to Clifton. So it is kind of like making up for what they lost, because when I was there, we tore down several buildings, and they were losing a lot of the tax incentives as well, so this is a way to get back what they lost, because Roche was there for such a long time.
Okay.
You said 15, 15?
15.
15 million?
15.
So we actually did better, I'll tell you why. They have 160 acres.
Yeah, but not, not all the acreage is going to be, not all the acres are going to be redeveloped, though.
Understood. They have 160 acres of total site there, and we have eight that are being redeveloped. At the same ratio, acre per dollar that we're looking at, we actually made out probably about, almost two times better than they did per acre on the amount of revenue that we generate, because this site is estimated to generate 21.2 additional million dollars per year on just eight acres, and eight goes into 160 20 times. So if you multiply the 1.2, even if you're going to allow on $1 million times the 20 times, that same amount of redevelopment we generated.
I, I understand what you're saying, but my question is, just about every acre in this project is going to be utilized. The ones, like Mr. Wenzel just mentioned, in, from Hoffman La Roche, not all the acres are going to be utilized. There are going to be quite a few acres that are going to be left, you know, for recreation purposes.
Sure. It's a much larger.
Exactly. So, that was my question. Go ahead, go ahead.
Councilman, when you work there, what was the height of the tallest building you had?
There was a couple, there were very big.
20 stories?
There was a couple that had 20 stories. Some had 10 and 12, but they were bigger buildings. But also keep in mind, too, on that site, for about the last six, seven years, they did remediation because of what's unfortunately on the grounds, because there was a number of years where there was major factor reduction. So there's a lot of work, and that's why some of that space.
But it also says, yeah, it also says that the, the state kicked back $25 million as a, I guess, part of the, the lost revenue.
There, there's going to be a Seton Hall Medical School on that property. I think, and that's figures, figures into. But I think to address your question is, when we look at that, we, as the residents you say, did we get the best deal for the township of Little Falls? Let's cut right to it, right?